To get started, we have a little gift we would like to present in honor of our school board appreciation week. Um, so, we want to do that right now. We just want to thank all of you for all of the hard work and we appreciate you a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is our, Ms. Donna Revis has got Flintville Student Council. And if at this time, they'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then the invocation. And then each of you will introduce yourself and tell us what's going on at Flintville.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all could please remain standing, we will lead you into there. Dear heavenly father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings you've brought with it. Lord, we thank you for giving us the opportunity to gather here today and share some of the things you have allowed us to do in our school. Lord, we thank you for the incredible leadership you have provided us and for everything they do. Lord, we ask that you just be with us throughout this night and just let what you want to be done be done. In your sweet name we pray, amen.
Okay, so we would like to introduce ourselves. My name is Riley Anderson. I am the student council president. I'm in eighth grade. I am also involved in Beta Club, Alpha and Omega. I play volleyball and I'm on the academic team. And I have been on student council for three years.
My name is Riley Smith. I am student council vice president. I have been in student council for three years. And I also participate in Beta Club, Alpha and Omega, basketball and volleyball.
My name is Drew Daniel. I'm in the seventh grade. I'm the student council intern vice president. I've been on student council for two years. And I'm also involved in the Alpha and Omega, Omega Club and the Beta Club.
My name is Jackson Mullins. I'm part of basketball, football, Alpha and Omega, Beta Club and academic team. And this is my first year in student council.
My name is Brandon Hudson. I'm in the seventh grade. Um, I've been in student council for one year. Um, I do a sports report for Flintville School each morning. And I also announce the home football games. And I'm in the Alpha and Omega Beta Club.
My name is Anna Franklin. I'm in the seventh grade. I am in Beta Club, Alpha and Omega Club and on the basketball team. And this is my second year in student council.
My name is Layla Gibson. I'm in eighth grade. I participate in Beta Club, Alpha and Omega and cheerleading. And this is my first year on student council.
My name is Emily Wahe. Um, I'm in eighth grade. This is my first year in student council. I'm a cheerleader and, um, Alpha and Omega.
My name is Ellis Aldridge. I'm in eighth grade and this is my third year on student council. And I'm in Alpha and Omega Club and the academic team.
My name is Kenny Camargo. I'm in eighth grade. I've been in student council for three years and I'm also part of the Beta Club.
My name is Valen Stow. I'm in eighth grade. I do cheer. I'm in Beta Club and Alpha and Omega Club. And I've been in student council for one year.
My name is Caitlin West. I'm in eighth grade and I do cheer. I am a part of Alpha and Omega, Beta Club. And I've been a part of student council for one year.
Oh, that was your turn. I'm sorry, yes. Um, so, at Flintville, our student council is very active. In the summer, we come to the school and we clean the inside and out of, outside of the school. Um, this just depends on what needs to be done and if someone tells us we need to do it. So, we also put together dances. Um, an example would be our Halloween dance we call the Boo Ball. Um, we meet every Wednesday during our lunchtime. We all have the same lunch. So, we meet and we discuss anything that needs to be done, that needs to happen. Um, we take requests from students, teachers. And to be in our student council, you have to maintain a ninety average and have a teacher recommendation.
At Flintville School, we also have a Beta Club. We do various fundraisers throughout the year to support our Beta Clubs such as at Valentine's Day. We do a fundraiser where the students can buy goodie bags for their friends that get delivered on Valentine's Day. And we also go on the Junior's House Blue Ribbon Walk at the end of the year.
Also at Flintville, we have academic team, Ms. Wiser and Ms. Spurlock. Or there's a, uh, supervisors. And, uh, they hold tryouts and the top choice students with teacher recommendation get picked. And we also compete in the county wide scholarships.
Um, this year, uh, we had our football team, which we, it was our first year with our new coach, um, Coach Gibson. Um, it was a pretty good year and we hope to improve next year.
Okay, so we also have volleyball, of course. And it's just a great opportunity not only to learn things on the court, but also to learn things off the court that you can use throughout your life. We also, um, hosted the county wide volleyball tournament this year in our gym.
We also have a cheerleading team. And we host tryouts and we have to learn a cheer chant and dance. And the coaches get to choose. And if you make the team, you do pep rallies. And we also cheer for our football and girls and boys basketball team.
Uh, we also have a band choir out of school. And we also got a new band choir director this year named Mr. Tyree. And things are starting to look better than last year.
I also have an Alpha and Omega Club. Our Alpha and Omega Club is a Christian-based organization. They meet every Wednesday after school. And, uh, and the leader of our organization is Ms. Josh Brennan.
At Flintville, we also have basketball. Um, I am the point guard, so they qualified me to talk about it. But, um, we practice every day after school. And, uh, we did not have the greatest season, but hopefully that will improve next year.
Thank y'all. We appreciate y'all. Did great job. At this time, our April first, two thousand nineteen board meeting will come to order. At, uh, do we have any guests here that's with Leadership Lincoln? Or any, if you would stand, give us your name and where, what, who you're with.
Hi, I'm with, uh, I'm with, uh, Florida State Farm. I'm participating.
We're glad you're here tonight. Anybody else? This time, we'll consider approval of our March fourth, two thousand nineteen board minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mr. Bradley, motion. It's Mr. Collins, second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As have it, approved, uh, consider approval of Agenda one point four oh three. Does anybody have any additions or subtractions or clarifications? So move, if we have a motion to move that we approve, Mr. Tucker, second. Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As have it. This time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Heath for recognitions.
All right, our recognitions for this month are, are, are our three regulars, recognitions. Uh, Support Staff of the Month is from Stonebridge Academy. Teacher of the Month is from Highland Rim. And Retired Educator of the Month will be presented by Ms. Buchanan. So, starting out with Support Staff of the Month, uh, Ms. Campbell.
I have the honor and privilege of recognizing the Stonebridge Support Staff of the Month, uh, Ms. Jill Smith. Uh, Ms. Jill has been here at Stonebridge as a special education assistant for the last seven years. Uh, Ms. Jill does a wonderful job whether she's in the inclusion classroom with students or in the self-contained special ed class here. She is always willing to do above and beyond whatever is asked. And everyone here appreciates and knows that they can always go to Ms. Jill for anything that they need.
Our Teacher of the Month is from Highland Rim, so, Mr. Owen.
Thank you. My pleasure tonight to present the Lincoln County Teacher of the Month to Ms. Sherry Buchanan. Ms. Buchanan has been at Highland Rim for all fourteen years of her career. And she sponsors our art club. She's our scholarship coach. And she is our former tennis coach, which I didn't even know. We play tennis, but we was talking a bit about it before we started. There was a tennis team at, at Highland Rim. In fact, it's hard to practice inside the school building or didn't have a place to practice. But anyway, uh, I didn't know she played tennis, but we may play here one of these days for some exercise. But Ms. B is a, is a hard worker, uh, very conscientious. We can eat lunch and it's, Ms. B's playing in time. She'll find us because she'll have a question or she'll have a praise or she'll have a, a good story to tell us. And, uh, it's never anything negative. It's always positive, Ms. B. Thank you and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
That's your.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And our Retired Educator of the Month is being presented by our board member, Ms. Buchanan.
I have the great honor to recognize Ms. Patsy Gray as our retired educator of the month. Ms. Patsy has a bachelor's degree in education from Berry's College located in Rome, Georgia. After college, she returned back to Lincoln County where she taught at Vantown, grades one through four. She said when Vantown School closed, she just went up the road to Flint, to Flintville. And so, after teaching at Flintville, she went to eight district. Ms. Patsy held the position as a third grade teacher most of her forty-one years of teaching. Ms. Gray has taught many students throughout the years. And she could see that the majority of the students that she's taught has, has given back to this, our community now. I'm one of those students. As I remember Ms. Gray, she was always an encourager. Even after me becoming a newly school board member, she still encouraged me to say, you can do a great job. I have faith in you. That's one thing I really appreciate about Ms. Gray as an educator. She always had encouraging words. So, I would great pleasure, I'm honored to recognize Ms. Patsy Gray as our retired teacher of the month.
Thank you.
My board members, uh, the system is only as good as the leadership. And I'm sure that you are gonna be a good leadership this year and years to come. And you have a lot of challenges ahead of you with the governor's proposal that he's brought up for education. And your building project and I have all the faith in the world that you'll do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we'll have our student advisor, Ms. Anna Grace Wilt and Denali Kenyanis, give us a report from them.
Well, student council elections started this week and we're getting ready for next year and we're super excited. Campaign started today and we vote Thursday. And if in case of a tie, we vote Friday. Uh, tomorrow, all sophomores take the Pareto and juniors take the ACT. And then seniors have a chance to go get to job shadow, whatever job they like to go into tomorrow. And we're super thankful for the school to help pay for all the FBLA skills, HOSA and FFA competitions to let us go to state.
Just want to add to that, um, as a senior, I joined HOSA my freshman year. And, uh, of course, the kind of attention was related to the medical field. And this year, theme was define your purpose. And, uh, we were in a room and I'm sitting there, I'm like, oh my goodness, define your purpose. I'm graduating high school. And what a great opportunity it's been to been in HOSA for the past four years. So, I'm really, really super thankful for the opportunity I have as a student to put my medical skills into practice. Um, I had the privilege to, uh, place first place in interviewing skills this year. It was my first time placing at state competition. So, HOSA will begin to, uh, look for sponsors and, uh, ways to fundraise money to go to nationals, which will be in Orlando this year. And I know our, uh, skills club is at state competitions this week. Uh, I talked to Frontiers and Robotics and they do well to our day competitions. So, just, we really appreciate you guys' support for our, our clubs, FFA, FBLA, skills, HOSA. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank y'all. Nothing under item five that we've added, so, item six, hand a review of policies, uh, six. Mr. Posey.
Earlier in the, uh, committee meeting, we, uh, approved and recommend, uh, second final reading for policy one point eight zero three, tobacco-free schools. Again, out of committee, we recommend.
We have a recommendation from the policy committee. Do I have any discussion on the, the adding? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Well, I about to get that for him. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? As have it. Next item is consider approval of textbook adoptions, uh, policy four, four oh one. Dr. Heath.
Uh, yes, you, you're seeing in your packet is the, um, adoption recommendations from, from our committee for all our social studies. And it's a pretty thick packet. Uh, the reason it's so thick is because we're doing a blanket adoption so that we're not tied down right now to picking out a specific textbook. Uh, we're, we have a lot of flexibility over the next few years until the next adoption by doing it this way. So, basically, we're asking you to approve this blanket adoption, which has all the options on there for us. And, and we'll narrow it down and, uh, and our teachers will narrow it down as we move forward and better analyze the standards in the curriculum and, and the, uh, the materials that, that we'd be using to address the curriculum with our students.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Bradley.
I second.
Ms. Buchanan, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? As have it. Next item made is discuss and consider approval to have third-party evaluation of school nutrition program. Uh, that was previously from a prior board meeting last month. I think we deferred it to the committee is.
The reason it's on the agenda is because I believe the way it was worded last month when it was tabled, it was tabled to the next meeting. Uh, I, I think you can just table something and definitely you don't have to say when it's supposed to come back up. So, that's the only reason it's on here. Uh, I do think, I, I agree with Mr. Stevenson. I think the intent with the committee was to have this go to the committee for more discussion there.
I think it'd be wise with the challenges the service company had to come into the program. And then they just got these surveys back to give them some time to work on those issues and work through the challenges they was already given. Uh, let them finish up this year and then come back to us with maybe a report on how things are going. And then maybe do a val, do an evaluation sometime next fall, just to see how things have improved. Because there's some things they gotta work through that was handed to them that they gotta get under control.
And if the board, if, if the board as a whole is in agreement with that, I'm gonna need some Roberts rules help.
I meant that we refer to the committee appointed by the chair.
I have a motion, but this couldn't refer to committee appointed by the chair. Do I have a second?
A second.
opposed a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise?
So, just, I mean, so it's not quote on the table now. It's just been put back to committee. Is that right? Okay.
And, and as a Roberts rule of order to clarification, I messed that up tabling it. It should've been a postponement if you're just wanting to go to the next month. I missed, so, I, I, I'll remember that. If you've got something that you really want to just discuss next month, the table and kind of get it done one month. You don't want to kill it or what else would you wanna be doing? Prolonging it? Uh, if, if that be the case is we'll go forward from that to the committee. Uh, the next item is speaking of school nutrition, to increase the price of adult breakfast price from a dollar fifty to a dollar sixty. Dr. Heath.
Uh, yes, you know, we had our, our audit this spring. Uh, there were three findings and really it had nothing to do with the price. But one of the things about the price of our adult meals is, uh, the, the, the state department said we have to raise the lunch, I mean, the price for adults immediately. Uh, really it's not an option. In spring, you might wanna say a little more to that.
No, it's just, um, when you look at the formula, we weren't charging enough. So, according to the USDA, um, we would be supplementing our adult meals with the funds we received through the National School Lunch Program. So, therefore, we have to raise the cost of our adult breakfast. Immediately.
Do I have a motion to approve? A move. Mr. Tucker.
Second.
Mr. Collins, second. Any discussion further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's roll call that. I'm sorry. Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Tucker.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Ms. Cooley.
Aye.
Mr. Collins.
Aye.
Ms. Buchanan.
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Eight, zero, motion carries post the price tomorrow. Or tonight. I think you're already working on it. Uh, next item, ten, is consider approval of list of library books from ninth grade. It can be declared surplus that, that those books are in your packet. Dr. Heath, any further elaboration?
No, no, sorry.
Motion to approve?
So move.
Tucker, Tucker, second.
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? As have it. Consider approval of list of books from Highland Rim to be declared surplus. Again, the items are in the packet. Um, Dr. Heath, anything you can move?
No.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Bradley, motion. Mr. Collins, second. All in favor, or is any discussion further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? As have it. Uh, next item is a letter in the packet from, Mr. Garris, consider approval of ROTC as an elective focus for Lincoln County High School. Dr. Heath.
Uh, yes, you know, to graduate a student, uh, in addition to the required graduation courses, they have to have three courses in a elective or focus area that is either approved by the state or by the board. Um, since we now have added our naval cadet corps there, we have the opportunity to off, to allow students to have a focus in the ROTC pathway, which would meet that requirement for graduation. And, and, uh, I recommend approval.
Do I have a recommendation? Mr. Collins. Mr. Tucker, second. Any discussion further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise?
As have it. Motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is consider approval of denim modification of director's coos contract per policy five point eight oh two. I've sent everybody out the packet of everything, information that I could come up with, ever, everything of how the calculation is being based on. And what this is doing is taking an item that we are actually reimbursing now as would be converted to a stipend that would be counted toward Dr. Heath's as far as his salary is in, in calculation of retirement. Uh, the clarification point, item four, is just clarifying that that two percent is based off what we consider just base salary, not including anything to do with the modification of the stipend per month. Uh, Dr. Heath, any?
No, it's money already budgeted, uh, and, and that's, I think that's the main thing from my perspective.
Do I have a motion to approve the addendum, amend, amendment? I'm sorry.
Measure, approve. Item thirteen.
Second.
Mr. Motion by Mr.. I'll get your name written. Posey. Mr. Bradley, second. Any further discussion? Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Ms. Cooley.
Aye.
Mr. Collins.
Aye.
Ms. Buchanan.
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker.
Aye.
Eight and zero.
Motion to amend this addendum is passed. Uh, next item is Mr. Bradley on financial reports.
Thank you. First item of the financial reports. Glad to answer any questions. Not, I just recommend acknowledging those seats with attached documents.
Does anybody have any questions on one forty-one? I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Move accept.
Mr. Posey moved to accept.
Second.
Ms. Haynes, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A, 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 opposed likewise? A, as have it.
Item two A, we've got three, one forty-one, general purpose school fund budget amendments. There's no due money involved in any of these three. The first one's kind of our annual amendment where we kind of true up all of our payroll line items. One thing I will note, and we've done this for several years, up at the very top, second from top, the salary supplements of three twenty-seven, that's where we budget that test sustainability money. Because when we build the base budget, that's before we know payouts. They sometimes come months and months later into the year. So, we try to guess amount, guessing amount that it could be. And then what that does is redistribute that money once we know budget estimates. We distribute those, redistribute that money to the various line items. But it's no due money involved in that amendment.
I'd like to just say something on those amendments. Um, I don't know the total amount, but you know, when you first glance at those, if, if you haven't worked with budgets this big, very often, you know, some of those numbers look, look pretty big. Uh, but in a thirty-something million dollar overall budget, uh, it's, you're doing pretty good if, if that's the cleanup right there as far as, you know, just moving things from one line to another. Uh, especially as fluid as a school system can be sometimes in our needs and where we, and having to balance federal funds, state funds and local funds. So, you know, hats off to you.
Thanks, Mr. Bradley.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Tucker.
Motion to accept. Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? As have it. Next item.
Item two B, we've got three, one forty-two, school federal program budget amendments. I think the first two are just kind of shifting some money around. Uh, most of them relate just to an account classification that the state's wanting on the retirement accounts. And the last one is to set up our, um, Read to Be Ready Summer Grant in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. But again, this is no local dollars, all federal money.
That is to keep us some liquidity in the food service over the summer months, is that?
Not that one. That's coming next.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to accept? Mr. Collins. Mr. Tucker, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? As have it.
Item two C, uh, this is a cafeteria amendment. And, um, this is to your point, uh, as far as the liquidity, because we don't have revenue those two months, but we also have to, we have payroll going out. And it's also truing up our line items for the conversion to the, uh, food management company. And we built this budget, that's before we entered that contract, so. But the thing you see here, uh, the increased revenue growth, uh, the, the entry is offset. It's, it's, we're not having to pull fund balance money because the revenue growth is significantly higher. So, uh, again, this money is not pulled from fund balance, local dollars. It's just shifting money around between the revenue and expenditure accounts.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Haynes, seconds. Uh, any discussion? The only point in this, previously, we had had this split before, fifty, fifty. And then we brought it back under the pretense that your food service should float itself. And that's our intent and goal through this process. And this should go back out because it should sustain itself in purpose. But with the changes in what's going on, we didn't want to incur any problems with liquidity over the summer months. So, that's the reason for it. But this will probably come back up at a later date if you're wondering why.
Well, we, we, we hope, we, we want it to, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Because, uh, just, you know, if you weren't on, you know, just a few years, a couple of years ago, when we brought it back into our food service budget from our GP budget, these things he's talking about, it was because we really couldn't get a good grasp on our total expenditures within that budget. And so, we had to get it all in one place and begin to look at it. And, uh, and now we, we have a better idea of where we are and where we're going, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Approved.
Item three, we have bid results for school buses. I about to see Keith here, but I did talk to him this afternoon. So, we've, uh, we did bids on a type A bus and that bid was seventy-eight thousand eight ninety-two and eighty-four passenger, ninety-eight thousand nine seventy-one and a seventy-eight passenger, ninety-eight thousand four twenty-seven. We had three hundred thousand budgeted for three buses. had three hundred thousand budgeted for three buses. Keese's recommendation is that we purchase three eighty-four passenger buses at ninety-eight thousand nine seventy-one. So, that is his recommendation. Three buses, three eighty-four passenger buses at ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Do I have a recommendation?
Move this one.
Mr. Posey?
I'll say.
Second. Any discussion? Does this, did Keese, are we on par with our schedule?
I'm thinking, are we, I don't know that answer. I'm thinking he's asking for one additional budget to catch us up, but I'm not.
I know we dropped one year before last, wasn't it?
Yeah, and he has asked for one additional one in next year's budget.
Next year's, okay.
So, if we're behind, we're not far behind.
We're not far.
One bus. So, that's a good thing.
So, we stack, we, Mr. Gill, we set up a stagger. Y'all aware of that, of how we're purchased so we don't have a lump sum to have to buy? And that's the reason I asked the question. Because we did, we got in a tight on something, and he said we could let one slide at one particular budget.
Yeah.
Roll call, please, mayor.
Ms. Cooley?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Ms. Buchanan?
Aye.
Mrs. Haines?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Eight and zero.
Eight, zero. Motion cast.
Thank you.
Points of information, I've got a few. You want to go first, Dr. Heath?
Sure. Points of information that I have is to update you on the phase one of the building program and ask Mr. Bryant to come tonight and give details from his perspective on where we are and what the next couple of steps are, and maybe a little bit of a timeline on some of that stuff.
Thank you. Basically, we're pretty much on track with our building program. We met with SFE, Ms. Bradley, we all met last Thursday and actually designed the kitchen for Blanche, tailored specifically to their needs. We met with the administration of LCHS about three weeks ago, finally got all the lab work nailed down. So where we're at, we're in drawings, basically. And that takes a little bit of time. Pretty much, you know, we should be ready to go out to bid, we would like to say in April, one would hope, but it's probably going to be late part of May now. It took a minute. We hope, we hope to move dirt somewhere around the first of August, hopefully. But, you know, that's providing everything comes in right, and, you know, we don't have any problems. So, that's kind of where we're at. We're in a pretty good spot. We hadn't run into a lot of things. We were able to, Dr. Heath actually forwarded me an email from TBA, and we were able to take advantage of some TBA energy dollars in the new building projects. That is well underway. I talked to our engineer today, and it has to be your engineer that actually does this. We have to do the application, he has to do most of the work for it. It cost a little bit to get the work done, somewhere around twenty-eight thousand dollars. We should receive a check for about a hundred and four thousand dollars. So we, you know, we're going, we get about seventy thousand in that exchange. The only thing we've run into, and I'll bring this to your attention, just so you know, it'll be coming to you before too often long, is the switchgear at Lincoln County High School. We have a four thousand amp switchgear out there, which is a very large switchgear. It has no blank spots to add for the new addition, but we have plenty of power, just don't have any spots to get it from, basically. So we talked to everybody we could talk to, including the electrical inspector. They told us that any came out, actually gave us a variance where we can put a new panel in the boiler room at another spot. Well, we got the sizes for that panel, that's not going to work. So the only real option we have is to change that switchgear. My estimate on that switchgear is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It'll be a separate bid. Just, we just don't have any other options. The only other option is to add another meter for the new portion, and then you add another demand charge, and you add a lot of, a lot of pricey things that would go on forever to that project, or to forever, forever and ever, actually. Whereas if we just change the switchgear, that's a one-time deal, and then we'll be done. Basically, we're in drawings is where we're at. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Bryant, I'm assuming that cost would be part of the project cost, not from some other item or some other line in our budget? Is that?
You talking about the switchgear?
Yeah.
Possibly. Just depends on where our bid is.
Okay.
It was not something we budgeted for. Motion.
When you say would like to move dirt, you know, in August, is that both projects simultaneously?
I really think so. Now, you never know. But it looks like to me both of them are running pretty closely together, actually. You know, the project at Blanche being a much larger project. But at Blanche, you know, we were able to get everything out of the way quickly. We're just talking about normal classrooms, and in a lot of cases. Where at LCHS, we were wanting to be real sure that we got what we needed there. And we had to go through two or three renditions of that. We actually changed the whole building once completely. As far, we didn't change it as far as where it's going to be, but we changed the configuration. And we wanted to be real sure that we got what met our needs there. So it, it's a little behind, I'd say. But I'd say they look like they're going to run together. That's what I think, anyway. Yes, sir.
Has, has Carter given you any idea of, like, a rendition, a drawing of what we're going to see at the high school? Because I know that's an important thing, and this board wants to see that before, before it gets stamped.
Yes, he has not.
Okay.
We've got the colored drawings basically for Blanche, and we're able to do that. But at this time, he's only had it back really about two and a half weeks, when we changed everything, he kind of moved everything around. I thought about calling and kind of beating him up today, but I let him go. I knew he didn't have it, he just doesn't have it. But I will be talking with him next week, I think. So.
I think before we get too far down that pathway, I know that was something that was discussed in several committee meetings and around this table. So I definitely think
Yes, sir.
that has to happen.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate it. Anybody else got any question?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
What, I've got one card. I would like to thank you for the gift card I received for being retired teacher of the month. Also, a special thank you to Jared Bradley, who I had in my second grade class almost forty years ago. It was a great night, and I certainly did enjoy it. And that's from Miss Patty McGee.
Left an impression on her, didn't you?
The other item is, if any of you didn't know, our director unfortunately is going to be incarcerated, and he's needing to.
[laughing]
So if anybody can provide funds to see to it that he gets bailed out this coming week, I believe, is it not?
I think it's coming up pretty soon, is my.
Thursday, and we are going to wear a real jumpsuit.
What color is that jumpsuit?
I think it's, I think it's hound's tooth.
SRO, Mr. Tony Metcalf is going to pick him up at around 5:15 Thursday morning and take him to the gazebo by the courthouse at 10:30.
Will you post a video?
As long as he gets.
LC, or LC, what is that?
There is a vicious rumor that you can pay extra to hold him longer. So I don't know where that would have come from.
Thanks.
Will you please post that video for us, please?
The other item I had, everybody's seeing in the news, the education savings account. You, if you haven't, you need to email your representatives because this is an impact that once it gets approved. I've always heard there's two things you don't play politics with, and that's your seniors and your, and your kids. But politics is what's going to be played out in this deal of who gets what and how much they get. And those are dollars that are going to a child that doesn't have to adhere to the same standards that we do in our academic curriculum. And it is a travesty that it's going in this way, in my opinion. Nobody else may feel that, but those are dollars, I think, Dr. Heath.
I'd like to say a couple of things about that, yeah.
It's two hundred thousand that we would gain if that money were allocated out to the deal. So I would urge you, contact, click on the link. It's easy to do. I've done mine. I've had response from two of the three. And I think that the more people that gets this message to them that this is not what the constituency in the state of Tennessee is wanting. But I think it's being driven by the five large metro areas with a fiasco that they have going on in their own administration. So, that's.
Yeah, and just a couple, a couple of comments. Number one, TSBA has sent you some good talking points over time regarding this. So, you know, you have some information to send out. But a couple of other things. I know when the policy, one of the policy guys spoke before the legislature a couple of weeks ago, he made the statement that in a few years, that in like two or three years, it would probably expand to about a hundred million dollars annually, recurring dollars. That's a pretty big expansion right there from twenty-five million to up to a hundred million in just three years' time. Well, to give you an idea of what a hundred million dollars means, there's about a million students, public school students in Tennessee. That's, that's a close estimate, right? So, every, I mean, a hundred million dollars, if that was spread out across each school system just per student basis right now, that would be one hundred dollars per child. For us, it would mean four hundred thousand dollars annually, if they're going to spend, if they're appropriating a hundred million dollars for that. So, you know, it impacts us locally because, you know, it's not too far down the road that we're going to have to get a new HVAC system at Unity. Well, are we going to have to go ask our taxpayers for four hundred thousand dollars? Or, or could this money, since it's already there, be appropriated for our kids? Because our kids deserve it too, you know? And, you know, back 2007, when I moved back to Tennessee, ever since then, the legislature has put in to, to the rules, a lot of laws about accountability. You know, we hold our kids accountable, the end of course test they take counts fifteen, twenty percent of their grade. We hold our teachers accountable, they're part of the team root, you know, the team evaluation system. Every school system has to have some type of a pay for performance. We hold our schools accountable. Every school will be getting a letter grade this year, based on a lot of factors. That includes chronic absenteeism, growth, academic performance, so forth. We hold districts accountable. Every district gets a rating every year. There's growth scores, there's all kinds of scores that are published. And so over the last twelve years, the legislature and the state board has put these rules in place. And so now, I just, I can't see the logic of the last twelve years putting all that in place so that Tennessee has a high degree of accountability, and then saying, oh, wait a minute, let's allow you to take your taxpayer dollars and go somewhere that has none of that, which is what's happening. So, I'm pretty passionate about it. I, you know, our kids deserve it too, not just kids in Hamilton County, Davidson County, and Shelby County. So, you know, I would encourage you to let your legislators know that and keep up with how they vote.
Because once this is voted, and if it's voted and goes that way, it's only going to add to and expand, and it's going to take away from dollars from our local education. The last item, let's, so I don't get all confused, you know how I am, clarifying our meetings. What are, let's make sure we're on the same sheet of music of when we're doing, April the 29th, for the work session, budget work session. Correct? And are we doing the?
Did anybody say correct? Are we right on that?
That's what was sent out earlier.
Okay, look.
All right, there's that. Are we doing the committee meeting of repurposing NGA that night?
Yeah, unless somebody has, unless somebody thinks we need to do it, I mean, I think that works best, and we're all already there.
Okay. I'm just making sure, because I'll get.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, it's, I just want to make sure while we all are here, everybody knows.
And recognitions that night too, right?
Is it?
For high school.
I believe we can make that work, yes, sir.
Okay, so, recognitions also. Now, this will be at Lincoln County High School as well. All this will take place at Lincoln County High School. Then we will have our regular board meeting on May the 6th, here, then.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know I'm hesitating. I'm making sure I'm, or right, I don't.
May the 6th is our regular meeting, which the budget will be on that meeting. May the 7th, if all goes well on May the 6th, I have to present it to the budget committee at the county commission. And on May 9th, I believe they present it to the full commission. Is that, that's the schedule, right? Go, okay.
We had mentioned at one time, taking a trip to another districts.
Yes, sir. So I went to visit Marshall County today to see a meeting in use. Rhonda Poole, their board secretary, very graciously spent quite a bit of time showing me the program. The way that they use it, and her words to me were that they use the very base level of the program. And what we have just started with the team drive is very similar to that part of the program. And, and so, in my mind, it would be, at this point, I think we, the option would, would be to check with maybe another system or two that are using some of the additional components, and see if it's worth spending the fifteen hundred dollars a year for those additional components. If we're going to be using very close to the base program, then I would think, just using the team drive, that the way that we, the way we did it this month would, would, would be the way to go. But I would like to. So, her recommendation, when I said something that we might look at attending their board meeting, and they don't use the program like where you all would enter votes, they still do the voting just like we do, call for a voice vote or a roll call vote. So, her recommendation was this, that she, she said it would actually be a waste of your time to come to their meeting because you would not see the program being used. And it's the same night as the teacher banquet.
That's right.
So, so that wouldn't work. So let me find a system that uses additional components, and, and we'll try to set something up to take care of that, if that's okay.
And while we're talking technology, is everyone able to get to your drive and open up the weekly reports that, that we're, that we're sending to you? And, you know, the supervisors put a lot of stuff on there. I, after they finish, I, I close it out on Monday morning and try to get it to you sometime on Monday. So, if that's working, we're going to continue with that until you tell me. Now, I know we were asking about the principals, I think somebody's asked that. So that's, that's the next addition. We're sort of going back and forth on, on, does that, does that add to this one, or do we have a separate one for them? So, that'll happen very soon.
All right. I'm going to go back one more time, make sure, April 29th, 5:30, Lincoln County High School, we're going to do the budget work session, we're going to do the NGA repurposing, and we're going to have the recognition.
The Husco students.
What order?
The Husco students wanting to be first.
All right.
Five thirty.
And then our regular May 6th board meeting will be here.
At 5:30.
It's 5:30 at Stonebridge Academy.
Sounds good.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Collins, second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.